Okay, so we'll call a meeting to order. Just before we get started, I'd like to let everybody know kind of how we'll process this. We've got a few things to go through in the agenda, then we'll get to the applications. When we come to your application, we'll ask you to come over to this table. This meeting is being recorded on the YouTube channel, so we'll ask you to use the microphone to speak into. When we get to the application, staff will go through the application and their recommendation. Then the counselors may have some, may have questions to ask, and at some point, I'll give you the opportunity to speak to your application if you want to. And then we'll go from there. So first thing, the agenda for today, any changes?
None by administration.
Thank you. Have a motion?
I'll make the motion to accept the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda, all in favor? We have no business arising from the minutes. Oops, so the minutes of March 29th. Were there any changes? No? Okay. Good motion. I move to approve the minutes of the March 29th, 2023 meeting as presented. All in favor? Thank you. Okay, let's move to the first application, E1.
Thank you, through the chair. So my name is Katie Bravo, I'm the Development Officer with the MD of Big Horn. So the applicant for development permit 1523 is not present. So I recommend, can we skip to item two, which is for development 1623? The applicant is currently present.
Sure, I'm very okay with that. Okay, let's do that then, we'll move to E2.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
And, yeah?
Yeah.
Yes, please. Yeah, Joy, could you show Amelia how to?
Testing, testing. Hi, I'm Amelia.
Good morning. So we'll just...
I'll just present, and then if they have any questions, I'll let you know.
Sure.
So the development permit application 1623, this has been submitted by the applicant Amelia McLaughlin for a major home-based business for a taxidermy shop. The landowners Alan and Joanne McCollin McCollin have provided authorization and confirmation that the applicant resides at the property full-time. The property is located at northwest section five, township 27, range six, with west of the fifth meridian, 65045 highway 40 near the hamlet of Benchlands. The property is designated as an AC district as per the Land Use Bylaw 09Z18. The application for a major home-based business is located within an existing accessory building, which is a garage slash workshop that was approved under development permit 6303. Major home-based businesses are listed as discretionary uses under section 8.3 of the Land Use Bylaw. Therefore, it's been referred to MPC for consideration. The reason this business is considered discretionary is because the business activity will be held within an accessory building and not within the single detached dwelling as per section 41112A. Home-based businesses are described in section 411 of the Land Use Bylaw, and application requirements are contained in 4216. And all of these regulations have been met in the subject application. The defined, home-based, major home-based business is defined under section 2.43 of the Land Use Bylaw, which means an occupation, profession, trade, or craft in which remuneration is normally received for any goods or services provided and is operated on a residential property by the residents of that property. A major home-based business may extend to accessory buildings and may create additional traffic and receiving clients or deliveries, but does not interfere with the rights of the other residents to quiet enjoyment of the residential neighborhood. Under section 413 states that the operator of the home-based business shall be a resident of the property in which the business is located. The applicant Amelia McLaughlin and the landowners, she will be the primary operator of the business, and she resides at the property full-time. The areas used in the accessory building for the major home-based business are outlined and attached in the floor plans, which will become Schedule A to any permit that's issued. The Land Use Bylaw outlines that a major home-based business may occupy no more than 30% of the gross floor area of the dwelling, or 50 square meters, whichever is lesser. Their proposed taxidermy work area will be approximately 11%, 200 square feet of the dwelling gross floor area, which is well under the maximum threshold outlined in the Land Use Bylaw. Section 414 outlines that a permit for a home-based business may be issued for no longer than one year for the initial application, and this is addressed in the staff recommendation. Any subsequent renewals may be up to three years in duration. There are no alterations being requested to the accessory building as part of the application. There are no other bed and breakfast or home-based businesses currently existing on the property. Section 419 outlines that a business may operate between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. The applicant has provided timeframes that fit within the hours outlined in the Land Use Bylaw. While the regulations would allow for an employee to be hired, no employees being considered at this time. For a major home-based business, there may be more than five clients or deliveries per week. The applicant has indicated that clients are met off-site, and the business supplies are picked up at a PO box in Cochrane, so there'll be no additional traffic to the site. Section 315 outlines that parking regulations for a major home-based business requires one additional parking stall. A parking plan has been provided showing that there's adequate space to accommodate three parking stalls, so one for the business and two required for the single detached dwelling. This parking plan will become Schedule B to any permit issued. While the Land Use Bylaw would allow for a commercial vehicle, the business or business sign to be installed, there's neither being or being proposed at this stage of the business. The applicant was asked to notify adjacent landowners, which would include section, or, what is it? Yeah, section eight and five in perimeter of the, of the property. So notification letters, emails, and texts are included in the agenda package. So for the two properties to the east are Crown Leaseland, so the MD has notified Alberta Parks and Tourism of their proposed development, and they had no concerns. The applicant has also provided a valid taxidermy permit that was issued by Fish and Wildlife, and this is also confirmed by the Land Management Specialist with Alberta Forestry and Parks. There's additional information attached within the agenda package, and the staff recommendations below. And if you have any questions, let me know.
Thanks, Katie. Any questions for Katie? Amelia, anything you'd like to add?
Oh, I think that about covers it.
Great, thanks. Just one quick question for you. Looked like you've been doing this for a while. I'm just curious, what prompted you to apply for a permit now?
Sorry, what's that?
What prompted you to apply for a permit now?
So the property that I live on, like with, with my parents, that's, like, I've only lived here for a few years now. I used to have the permit up. Um, I used to have the permit up, uh, north by Vermillion for about five years.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so I've done it for probably eight years now.
Oh, great.
Yeah.
And just one other question out of curiosity. Thank you. Just out of curiosity, okay, where did you take your training, or what is the course requirements?
Um, so to actually get the taxidermy permit from Fish and Wildlife, uh, the only stipulation is that it has to be in a dwelling detached from, uh, a house. But as for training, um, I've trained with a lot of taxidermists from all over Canada, uh, and a couple from the States, actually. Um, so you kind of just learn on your own, or you find people to mentor you type thing.
Okay, thank you. I was just curious. My uncle did it for years in Nova Scotia.
Oh, no way?
Thank you.
Okay, if there's, uh, any other questions, kind of a motion? Else?
I would like to make the motion that we accept, um, the, uh, development permit sixteen twenty-three, um, near the Hamlet at Benchlands.
With the staff recommendation?
Oh, with the staff recommendation, thank you.
So I'll move to, uh, prove staff rec, all in favor? Thank you. You're all set?
Great, thank you very much.
Uh, Katie, a quick question before we go on. Um, in your description, you made a statement about, um, for major home-based businesses that we, there may be more than five clients or deliveries? I didn't, I was gonna look that up, and I didn't. Is it supposed to be no more than five?
Uh, no more than five, yeah.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
That's right. Okay, so let's move to E three.
Perfect, so E three is development permit seventeen twenty-three for Adriana and Adam Storms. All right, so the development permit application number seventeen twenty-three is for the renewal of a visitor accommodation suite for one year. The application was submitted by the landowners, which are present, Adam and Adriana Storms. The subject property is located at one-oh-eight Rivers Bend Way, which is legally described as lot forty-four, block seven, plan one-five-one-three-one-two-nine. The site is developed with a single detached dwelling and a tou- and attached garage with a visitor accommodation suite in the lower level. The original development permit number was seventy-two-seventeen and seventy slash eighteen for the change in use to a visitor accommodation suite. The site is within the Hamlet Service Residential District, R one S, and the use visitor accommodation suite is listed as a discretionary use within the district. Under section forty-one-one-one-K-three of the land use bylaw oh-nine-z-eighteen, um, it does allow for the development officer to issue renewals for visitor accommodation suites, granted that the application is in accordance with section fourteen-five of the land use bylaw. However, this application is being brought back to the Municipal Planning Commission for consideration due to the fact that the visitor accommodation suite renewal date expired on November sixteenth of twenty-twenty-two. An application was not received until April of twenty-twenty-three, and it's not within the DO's ability to renew these types of suites if they have expired. Um, it's been noted that since twenty-eighteen, the landowners have renewed their visitor accommodation suite on a regular basis, with the most recent renewal being development permit number eighty-five-twenty-one. This permit came into effect on July twenty-ninth of twenty-twenty-two, but it had an expiry of November sixteenth of twenty-twenty-two. This was due to, due to the significant backlog of permits under review by the planning department, which in turn delayed their permit being issued in July of twenty-twenty-two and not November of twenty-twenty-one. The applicants have provided a cover letter explaining their situation, and then, and that this was just an oversight in their part. Uh, the MD's planning department supports the renewal of the visitor accommodation suite based on the following observations, that there's been no complaints, no enforcement issues, and the landowners have adhered to their previous approvals in a timely manner. The planning department has taken the following section in ca- into consideration. Uh, so fourteen-six-nine reads where the maximum limit of visitor accommodation suites has been approved in accordance with section fourteen-six-nine. No additional approval shall be granted unless a development permit for a visitor accommodation suite expires and is not renewed within thirty days, is revoked by the MD, or is canceled by the landowner writing. The hamlet of Dead Man's Flats is currently at the thirty percent maximum allowable number of short-term rental suites. The interpretation of this section is to provide clarity to the development authority on what steps to follow in order not to exceed that thirty percent ratio of visitor accommodation suites and occupied dwellings in the hamlet. In short, this section does not prohibit MPC from providing a renewal to an expired permit. These types of suites are still discretionary in nature and are subject to the twenty-one day appeal period. A visitor accommodation suite is defined as a secondary or studio suite operated by the registered owners as a temporary accommodation for tourists or members of the traveling public. Visitor accommodation suites are incidental and subordinate use to the principal residence. Characteristics of a visitor accommodation suite include, or not limited to, a secondary or studio suite that's occupied on a temporary basis rather than being utilized as a primary or secondary residence, advertising of the secondary and studio suite as being a vacation property, vacation rental, or any other short-term rental accommodation, the commercial nature of this, the commercial nature of the secondary or studio suite, imposition of a fee or charge for use of the secondary suite or studio suite, and/or the use of a system for reservations, deposits, confirmations, or forms of electronic payment. Four-sixteen of the land use bylaw contains the regulations for secondary suites, suites, which applies to visitor accommodation suites. Section force fourteen-six are specific regulations for visitor accommodation suites. Application requirements are outlined in section forty-two-nineteen and have all been met. The sign that identifies the visitor accommodation suite at the subject location meets the regulations outlined in section fourteen-six-six, and there's been no changes since the previous approval. As per section four-sixteen-one and four-six, fourteen-six-four, the registered owners of the primary residence must reside on the property at all times and shall operate, um, these visitor accommodation suite. As per section forty-two-nineteen, a sta- signed statutory declaration has been sub- submitted by the landowners, Adam and Adriana Storms, and they reside permanently on the property. As per section four-sixteen-two, the maximum floor area of the suite shall not exceed forty percent of the gross floor area of the principal residence, or eighty meters squared, whichever is less. The total floor area of the residence is three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-twenty square feet, and the suite occupies eight-hundred-and-twenty-one square feet, which is equal to twenty-one percent of the total floor area. This is shown on the basement floor plan, which will be utilized as Schedule A to any permit issued. As per section fourteen, four-sixteen-six, a resident and guest parking shall be accommodated entirely on the property. A parking plan has been submitted showing two stalls for the dwelling unit and, uh, one stall for the visitor accommodation suite. There is also a minor home-based business on the subject property that requires an additional stall. Um, so the parking plan shows a total of four parking spaces available on the site, which is, um, which will become Schedule B to any permit approved today. As per section fourteen-six-eleven, a development permit issued for a visitor accommodation may not be issued for more than a period exceeding one year. The applicant was asked to notify the adjacent landowners, so one-oh-nine, one-oh-seven, one-twenty-one, one-twenty-two, Rivers Bend Way, of the visitor accommodation suite renewal. Uh, the notification letters are attached, and these notifications were consistent with previous approvals. The current property was approved for a minor home-based business under permit fifty-one-twenty-two of August of twenty-twenty-two for an onsite bike repair. The development permit outlines that the business would be operating in conjunction with the visitor accommodation suite, and no inbound visitor traffic is permitted, meaning that no additional traffic would be generated by the home-based business. No clients are permitted to come to the site for the minor home-based business. Section four-eleven-eight does allow the development authority to approve a minor home-based business as a discretionary use in conjunction with a suite, but must take parking, traffic, or any negative effects to the surrounding neighborhood or properties into consideration. Uh, this is addressed in condition number twelve of the staff recommendation. There is additional background information attached in the staff recommendation below, and if you have any questions, let me know.
Thanks, Katie. Any questions for Katie?
Yeah, I have a number of questions. One is that, uh, it has to do with a parking stall, so on the one hand, you're saying that there should be four parking stalls available, and one of those has to do with a minor home-based business. And on the other hand, a couple paragraphs later, we're saying there should be no additional traffic to the property, so.
We can't vary the parking regulations, so they have to be there. So we can't vary parkulations at all, neither can MPC. So they, you have to show that you have adequate parking.
Okay, thank you. And the other one is, um, point fifteen of your, uh, staff recommendations, uh, saying that it, uh, show otherwise expired November sixteen, twenty-twenty-four, so that exceeds the one-year period. Like it ex- it expired November twenty-twenty-two, right?
Give me one second.
Is that just a typo?
Yeah, I think you're correct. I'm just gonna look at the development permit really quick, and then I can confirm that for you. Yes, that's correct, so we need to update it to twenty-twenty-three.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
That was a good catch. I just didn't even see it. No? Any other questions? Anything you'd like to add?
So, thank you very much, and administration, thank you. Uh, so, A- Adam Storms, um, we've been residents in Dead Man's since twenty-seventeen and active members in the community. That's a long presentation, and I just want to thank you guys all for your, your help and support over the years, um, for both, uh, air, uh, visitor accommodation suite and our, uh, home-based business. Last year was a, uh, pretty rough year for us personally, which contributed to, uh, some of the confusion, uh, with timelines and whatnot. Obviously, there's also some questions about, uh, process and land use bylaw, uh, stuff that I would love to chat about, uh, post this decision. Um, there's always room for improvement. Um, but yeah, like, it's small oversight on our behalf, and, uh, I think with some of the changes that are being proposed with land use bylaw, it'll make it easier for everybody, both residents, administration, council. Um, so looking forward to seeing some of those changes. Yeah, so apologize for the oversight, for all the extra work, but, um, yeah, we'll, uh, do better next time.
Okay, thank you. Uh, if there are no other, uh, discussion, do we have a motion?
I move acceptance of the staff recommendation.
As amended.
As amended, yes.
Yeah, so it's just been updated for expiry of November sixteen of twenty-twenty-three.
Right, so it's condition fifteen, right? Okay. Want to approve the amended staff recommendation, all in favor? Great, thank you. I see in October, yeah.
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, just before we go on to the other, um, development permits, just want to, just comment on one, uh, procedural thing maybe we want to look at when we're presenting the, um, conditions of the permit. We probably want to highlight some key conditions. If there's, like, for instance, the renewal date that we have there in November sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three with the, with the change. Um, I think we just want to, when we're presenting that, uh, near the end of our presentations, just to, just to highlight some of the key conditions there. Just, I know that you have that in your packages, but, uh, I know that, uh, I've done that at previous MPCs as well, so.
No, that's good, and, uh, sometimes there are-
If that's helpful to you.
Yeah, most of the time, as you know, the conditions, there's, there's a lot of conditions that go into every-
Exactly.
Every one, but-
And we don't, we don't need to read them out, obviously, but, uh, but certainly some key conditions that, uh, that we wanted here to, and I think, you know, a date for the permit too.
Absolutely.
That's something that we want to just read out, uh, and that's something that I'll leave for Katie to do. Other than that, they are standard, a lot of their, their standard conditions.
That's great, thanks, Wayne.
Thankfully, the, the date was in bold, so that's certainly stuck out to me, so.
Uh, just before we go on, uh, Mr. Walsby, I forgot to ask, did you want to speak to one of these applications? Or obviously, it must be this one. Ah, okay, sorry. Have I checked, because sometimes, sometimes we have, um, um, people that would like to speak, and I, and I, and I missed that early on. Okay, so let's go to, uh, E four.
Thank you, so development permit application twenty-twenty-three, um, for Daniel and Deb Grady. So the subject application was submitted by the landowners Deb and Dan Grady, who are present today, uh, for two accessory buildings. One is a brick oven, and one is a movable shed, um, that requires setback variances. The subject property is located at number nine Fortress Mountain Way, which is legally described as lot thirteen, block two, plan three-zero-three-two-GH. The site is developed with an existing non-conforming single detached dwelling with an attached garage, as well as two accessory buildings in, located in the front yard, one brick oven and one movable shed. The site is located within the Hamlet Service Residential District, R one S, and the, uh, use accessory building is listed as a permitted use within the district. Section forty-two-two-one of the land use bylaw provides a list of development that does not require a development permit. Granted, the structure is in accordance with all applicable regulations. In this case, the regulations outlined in section fourteen-five-one of the R one S district would apply. The two subject accessory buildings, the brick oven, which is four-point-two-nine meters squared, and the movable shed, which is eight-point-five-six meters squared, both fall under the exemption for a development permit under section forty-two-two-one-Q, which reads as follows. The construction or installation of an accessory building or structure that is ten meters squared or less of the floor area, subject to the regulations of section four-one, and any other applicable regulations of the land use district in which the development, um, is proposed to be located. This application is being referred to the Municipal Planning Commission for consideration due to the fact that the structures do not conform with the development regulation setbacks outlined in section fourteen-five-one for accessory buildings. The non-conformance was a result of a compliance assessment request, CA twenty-twenty-three dash zero-three, which is attached for information purposes. The applicants have also provided a written summary regarding the non-conformance, which is provided in the background materials. Under section forty-one-three-one, for variance powers of the development authority, reads as follows. The development authority may approve an application that does not comply with this bylaw if, in the opinion of the development authority, A, the proposed development would not unduly interfere with the amenities of the neighborhood or materially affect the use, enjoyment, or value of the neighboring parcels of land. And B, the proposed development conforms to the use prescribed for the land use district in which it's located. The brick oven requires a seventy-three percent sideyard variance setback, and the movable shed will require a thirty-eight sideyard- and the movable shed will require a thirty-eight side yard setback variance, which exceeds the standard twenty percent as indicated in section forty-one three-three C for side yard setback variances by MPC. However, both variance requests can be applied under section forty-one three-one based on the following observations. There have been no complaints, no enforcement issues, no objections or concerns were received from the adjacent neighbors, which, which indicate both structures do not unduly interfere with the amenities of the neighborhood or materially affect the use enjoyment or value of the neighboring parcels of land. Accessory buildings are also listed as a permitted use in the R one S district. Therefore, MPC has the ability to apply this section if, in its opinion, the variance request meets the criteria outlined in section forty-one three-one. The movable shed also requires a sixteen percent front yard setback variance. This falls within the thirty percent variance powers for front yard setbacks under section forty-one three-three B for MPC. Section four point one of the land use bylaw contains regulations for accessory buildings. And section four one seven outlines that the required minimum setbacks for an accessory building may be reduced provided that, one, the wall of the accessory building nearest to the property line is fire-rated; two, the exterior wall is finished in such a way that it does not require maintenance or maintenance and/or access agreement is signed with the abutting landowner; three, no part of the accessory building, including eaves or footings or foundation, will encroach onto the adjacent site; and four, all roof drainage is directed by eve troughs and downspouts onto the site where the accessory building is located. Items one, three, and four have all been met. The structures are under the typical size of an accessory building and are made with non-combustible materials. Regarding item two, the brick oven may require maintenance and upkeep. It is the opinion of the planning department that this may become a matter between the two respective landowners, number nine and eleven Fortress Mountain Way, if an approval is made. This matter is addressed in the proposed conditions provided for below. The applicant was asked to notify adjacent landowners, so number twelve, ten, and eight Windridge Road, number ten, seven, eleven, eight, and six Fortress Mountain Way, of the accessory buildings and the variances being requested as per section forty-two four-three. The notification letter is attached. Responses from twelve and eight Windridge Road, ten, seven, eleven, eight, and six Fortress Mountain Way were received. There were no, no concerns or objections to the accessory buildings or the variances as part of this application. Staff recommendation is that MPC provide a decision as per section forty-two twenty-two-two, which reads as follows. A, approve the application. B, approve the application subject to conditions considered appropriate or necessary. Or C, refuse the application stating the reasons for refusal. The staff recommendation below is to provide MPC with standard conditions and/or recommended conditions of approval. The MPC may amend or add conditions that align with the land use bylaw or any other MD statutory documents or policies. If a refusal is made, the MPC would need to provide a valid, valid planning reason for the refusal. There is additional background information attached, and then the staff recommendations below, um, for option B, um, for a decision. And I can answer any questions that you may have.
Thanks, Katie. Questions? I, I have one. I'm sorry, go ahead, Kevin.
Uh, in your review, you mentioned there might be some kind of agreement between number nine and eleven Fortress Mountain Way concerning the brick oven. Which condition is that?
Condition number seven, uh, pursuant to section forty-one, or four point one point seven B two, any arrangements for maintenance and/or access to the brick oven will be a matter between the two respective landowners, number eleven and nine Fortress Mountain Way.
Okay, thank you. Skimmed over that twice and missed it.
Uh, Katie.
I have a question, sorry.
Go ahead.
I have a question with regards to, um, the notifications that were sent out, out to the adjacent landowners from number ten, Windridge Road, I guess nothing was received.
But that is correct.
Hello? Uh, there was, uh, an email received from number ten, and I thought I had forwarded it to the MD. It got forwarded after this package was put together, and they also were in support of it. So it was unanimous from all the neighbors. Other than they wanted it in their yard instead of the pizza oven in their yard.
Question about the shed, Katie. We have to, uh, approve a variance, but in four one seven, that business of the wall of the accessory building nearest to property line has to be fire-rated. That shed is plastic, I think. Did you look at this?
Uh, yes, I did. I'm not sure of the question.
So, right, I, I'm trying to understand, the, the requirement is that the, if, if we can approve the variance, if the wall, for the shed to be inside the setback, if the wall of the building nearest to property line is fire-rated. So. Sorry?
Give me one moment, please.
Sure. So, so while we're waiting, Deb, maybe, it looked in the, looked like in a photograph that might be sitting on concrete?
The shed?
Yeah.
No, it's sitting on a gravel pad. It's got, uh, timbers around holding the gravel, and it's just sitting on that.
I don't know what the answer is going to be, but it might be that you might want to slide that out so it's into the set, out of the setback, which would get rid of this problem. So let's just see what Katie says.
So I recommend we ask the applicants if it's a flame retardant plastic shed that was purchased. Um, I'm just looking online now, but perhaps they could speak to it as well.
Um, the, the shed, the shed is a, a Costco shed. I, I assume, it meets all, it meets all Canadian building standards.
Right, but there's no requirement for a shed to have fire rating.
I, I don't know that.
So, yeah. So I'm, I'm pretty. Even if it's fire resistant, that doesn't make it fire-rated. So I, I think, I think we have a problem, um, if, if we're going to, if we're going to approve this, that, uh, we have to get around this business of the fire rating.
Yeah, what I want to add, Mr. Chair, is, um, I believe that we, have we not referred this to, uh, our fire chief? As one of the referrals, I'm just wondering. I know our bylaw does say that, um, for this variance to be granted, one of the criteria is that it needs fire rating. It would be nice to have that, that, uh, that response, whether this type of shed does require a larger setback. I guess I thought we looked into that.
So, so I think, uh, if we want an answer on the fire rating, that's a building code issue? And you'd have to have somebody familiar with the building, building code to tell you that.
And I guess, uh, in this case, for the size of the accessory building, um, it doesn't require a building permit, development permit or building.
No, it's just the.
That's, that's the difficulty, the kind of the gray area here.
Yeah. It's just the bylaw requires a fire rating, fire-rated wall, so, I, I think there's an easy solution if you guys could, can find a way to slide that shed forward, no?
Is, is there any way to confirm the fire rating?
I'll have, I'll have to take it down. There's, there's no moving it.
No?
No.
So, so it's not a movable shed then?
Well, it's, it's, it's a, it's a shed.
Yeah.
But to, to move it, I would have to.
Disassemble it and.
Yeah, disassemble it and, and, um, and the, the pad, the way, the way the plastic shed goes together, the pad has to be perfectly flat.
Sure.
So, so there's no, you know.
Understand, yeah, okay.
And then the pad's just the side, the footprint of the shed.
Sure.
Yeah, I'm on the website, and it just says the material is resin and it's low maintenance, um, wood stuff. I know on the north side, there are two sheds like that right on the property line. And we're fine with them, but yeah.
Yeah, it, the unfortunate thing is when you, it's no longer grandfather, right? And that's how, that's how we end up having to have a variance.
Mr. Chair, I think that also there's a, rather than just even moving it, you can probably, just like a wood stove within a house, you could fire rate the backside of it with, um, like I've, with wood stoves, it can be a plate of steel that's, um, separated from the back of the wall of the structure. Like, I think it's an inch, inch and a half, that creates a fire barrier. So a fire barrier probably could be added if you can move it, probably fairly simply by attaching it to the studs within.
Are we on? Yes. Uh, we are in the process of sale of this property, and the possession date is May the eighth. The new landowners are planning to, uh, rent the house out for a short period of time and then, uh, bulldoze it and build a new residence there. So the shed will be gone at that point. They'll be moving it anyways, so, just to let you know that.
So I, I think we're kind of in a sticky spot here because, um, we can't show that the, that, that the wall in question where we're asking for the variance is fire-rated, and, uh, and it doesn't look like it can be moved. So, um, we can put a condition in here that says it's either meets, four one seven I, or one, I guess that is, or it moves out of the setback area. But that kind of leaves you guys with, I don't know what that does.
Uh, so, under condition number four, uh, it, we do require that they go and obtain, um, exemptions for building permits from an accredited agency. And at that time, the accredited agency, a safety code officer, could determine if the plastic material that the building is made out of is fire resistant. From what I see online, it's a, um, high-density polyethylene, um, which is, um, fire-proof or fire-resistant, or better, flame retardant, I should say, but, um, in terms of it being, like, determined that, I think it would be best if it's a safety code officer, um, which is why the condition number four was added. So we could just, uh, reword the condition that specifically that both are deemed, to meet that one section of the land use bylaw, and that it's in writing from a safety code officer.
Uh, well, it could also be an architect, wouldn't have to be a safety codes person.
What was that?
Could, it could also be an architect, uh, for the fire-rated wall.
Yeah.
Doesn't have to be a safety codes person. So I, 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 I think that's what we have to do, we have to put that condition.
I'm just wondering, with what you said, and, um, you know, if, if the plan is to, uh, tear down the shed anyways by the new owners, why wouldn't we simply say that the shed has to be destroyed by possession date of May eighth?
That's another option, yeah.
Ms. Grady had stated that they weren't demolishing it right away. They were going to rent it, and within a year, then demolition. Can it be within a year that it's?
It's still a valid option, I mean, you could just take the shed down now. That would get rid of this problem.
Unless they.
Yeah, yeah. It, it changes the deal with the buyer, but, yeah. You got any preference of how you want to deal with this?
I need to get the house sold. And, um, if I have, I've moved to Calgary. And, um, if I have to, if I have to, uh, haul the shed away, it is what it is, I mean, I can, I would, I would rather cer, I would certainly rather not. But, um, I, I, I can't, I can't imagine the material, being of such a quality that it would support combustion and, and be approved, uh, in Canada.
So, so the problem is that, that, that the bylaw specifies that it has to be fire-rated.
Yeah.
And that's a specific thing in the building code.
Okay.
I'm familiar with that, and it's the only reason I'm bringing it up. And, um, I don't believe that this commission can approve that, that, uh, shed to sit inside the setback without breaking this part of the bylaw.
Okay.
And, and we just can't, we can't do that. So we have to provide, we have to give you some way to get out of this thing, and I'm, you know, I'm asking what you prefer. So what it looks like is you either move it, uh, I think it's, I think I remember it's, it's like less than a meter to get inside the setback.
Yeah.
Or you put a fire-rated wall on the back, so you'd have to hire somebody to tell you what, how you, how you do that, which might be easy, as Alice said, it's something to be in. I don't think it's more than, I don't think it's just putting a sheet of metal on there. It has to be, to get fire rating, there needs to be some insulation. Um, or, um, you could take the shed down.
I, I think the most straightforward thing is, is to, to see if I can get a friend to give me a hand and, and haul the shed away.
Okay. So what, if, if that's the preferable of those possible changes, then we, we'll just put that condition in, and, um, and you'll be good.
Okay. The only, the only question that I would have for you as the landowner is, um, would that put the, uh, sale of the property in jeopardy?
I have no idea. So, so you could tell the buyers those things as well. If they, and my, and my understanding is, because this started off, you, you had to get the, uh, conformance, right? And, and isn't that, that's just a requirement of the bank, their bank wants to see that, so.
Yeah, it's part of the sale is you have to have the real property report and the compliance letter. It's not a financing issue with the buyers, but it's, it's part of your title stuff.
Yeah, it's usually the bank, it's the lender that's asking for the compliance. So you could then make a change in your sale, saying this is what this is, or you'd have to deal with this. Explain, explain it all, and, and, without taking the shed down, that's a possibility.
Um, in here, Katie had said, under condition four, all constructions shall conform to the National Building Code, and a building permit will be obtained for the structure. If a building permit isn't required, an exemption letter can be provided. Um, oh, no, I thought it was something about going to, um, talking to a, uh, Katie, what was it, the, the building inspector and just seeing what the fire rating should be, or if it is.
Yeah, and you can, the building inspector, but sometimes they, they're reluctant to tell you, um, what to do. They're just telling you it's not right, right? You can try, um, that's why I suggested an architect or architect technologist or somebody.
So I would say that would be our first preference, is to find that out first. And if it's fire rate, fire-rated, then we don't do anything. If it's not, what we need to do to make it fire-rated. And if that's pretty easy, then just to leave it and, and do that.
Yeah, yeah.
Or even leave that for the new owners to do.
Yeah, so you just have to do something with them with your sale agreement, so that they know.
That this is what they have to do.
Yeah. Because the condition will be there. One of those things has to happen in order to meet this 417 clause.
So, I'm trying to follow this. So, we could put, or we could ask the buyer, or you could tell the buyer to tear the shed down or move it? I'm confused.
Well, there's going to be a condition in here that says you have to meet this section of the bylaw. And there's different ways that's possible. So, I'm just suggesting to get, you might be able to do something with the buyer to kind of pass on that they accept that and then do something to make this thing meet the bylaw. We're all good, right? But we can't approve something that doesn't meet the bylaw.
All right, so our first choice is to talk to the buyers and see if they'll take over the, either moving it or fireproofing the back wall, and we could find out what it would take for that so that they know.
Yeah.
Second choice is for us to fireproof it ourselves. Third choice is move it. Move it, remove it.
Yeah, you might find that it's easy to fire rate the wall. I don't know.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I guess when I had spoken, actually had spoken with our fire chief just a little earlier here, I guess I had misunderstood that the movable shed was within proximity to the brick oven. That's not the case. But the movable shed, and I'm looking at the plan here, so 0.94 meters to the property line. So, I guess I am not clear as to what is on the other side of the property line. So, how much distance do we actually have as it stands from the movable shed to the neighboring development?
Are we there?
Yeah.
The house, the neighbor's house is probably a foot from the property line, inside the property line. Their eaves come just inside their property line.
Okay, so that is the issue and we're not clear on whether we have the appropriate fire rating.
Wayne, just take a look at the upper right picture on page 89.
So, it is less than a meter to the property line and I see the house on the adjacent property is very close to the property line.
And even though we have a letter from the property owner to the south, Sylvain Bernard, which would be page 93, saying that he's fine with everything the way it is. That doesn't matter.
Not when it's... The problem is it doesn't meet the bylaw, right? And even though we've got some discretion, we can't approve something that doesn't meet the bylaw.
And, Mr. Chair, I guess the question is, what is the required distance? Is it the bylaw requirement that we have for accessory buildings? You know, we have those for safety reasons as well. But when you vary that distance, I guess the question is, is it too close? And I think, yeah, we don't know for sure.
Well, I think we do, because you know where the shed is located.
Right, right, but we know it's very close.
It's a half a meter out.
You know, would a building safety codes officer say? They may say that, so it is very close. I didn't realize it was that close.
I think the side yard setback's 1.5 meters and there at 0.95, right? So, it's not very much.
So, if I look here, so they are, for the shed, it's 0.56 meters away from the setback.
Yeah, from the setback, yeah, half a meter.
And then, just to reiterate, so under condition four, it does read that all constructions shall conform with the National Building Code and a building permit shall be obtained for the structure for either one. So, if the building, if a building permit's not required, we have right now that an exemption letter be provided to the MD within three months of the approval. We could add to this that if the one shed cannot meet the building code regulations, that it be removed. Because either way, we have to have something saying from a safety code officer that both meet the building code.
Yes. Yeah, because it was put into the bylaw the way it is, somebody would have to verify that. So...
That seems like reasonable rewording to me, that would then take into account the owner's top preferred options. So, they can work their way through it and if not, then remove it.
I'd suggest that we leave, kind of give them as many opportunities as we can and not specify anything except that it meet this. Yeah, just meet that. And then, we've talked about the ways that could happen, so we don't restrict them into something. So, I would suggest we add a condition that says that what we're calling the movable shed must meet section 4171 of the bylaw. And then, that leaves all options open for how that could be done. You guys be okay with that?
Is there going to be something that indicates that it be resolved by possession date?
We, that, the sale of that is their business, right? It's not our business. Ours is just the bylaw. So, if they sell it, it doesn't matter. I think, what I think in terms of that happening is it passes on to the new owner. That's why I was saying they can talk to the owners and maybe support something else, but that's really not our concern and not our jurisdiction.
Okay.
And firsthand experience, I would say don't limit it to a possession date, because possession dates can move a lot.
So, I've reworded condition four. So, it reads, "All construction shall conform with the National Building Code and a building permit shall be obtained for the structure. If a building permit is not required, an exemption letter be provided to the MD of Bicorne within three months of this approval. And also meet this, meet section 417I. If the structures cannot meet the specific criteria, it must be removed or moved or removed to a conforming position." And then, to add to that, if it is moved to a conforming position, it doesn't require a building permit or a development permit. So, if it's moved, they don't need to come back for anything. But if it meets that criteria under the National Building Code and they get the exemption, then both could stay.
Okay, so your problem that I see is, they don't need a building permit. Doesn't matter, right? But the problem is, the... The, in section 417, requires that walls to be fire rated. Got nothing to do with building permit. Says the wall has to be fire rated. So, I think you have to ask them, the requirement has to be that it's fire, that it's either fire rated or moved, right? So, I'm suggesting that we don't say any of that. We just say it has to meet 471.
So, for, to reword the condition...
And be specific to the movable, what we're calling the movable shed, so that this doesn't get transferred over to that oven.
Okay, so reword condition four so that they don't go for a building permit, they just go to get confirmation of the, to meet that one section?
Yeah, just always say is it has to meet 4171, right? Fire rated or the movable, yeah, specifically the movable shed, not the oven. And fire rating's only one option.
And then, would part of that condition say how long before we have to let the MD know that or what?
That you would have, that has to be confirmed at some point. But that's, we can talk about that and kind of relative to your sale and all that, what would make more sense to you if you want to put a date there.
Just curious.
Yeah, no. Again, we can't do anything. It's not within our jurisdiction to say anything about your private contracts and business, right?
So, I would think that the conditions for the sale of the property right now would be that the current owners would meet the conditions of getting the MD's approval of...
It may.
Were the pizza oven and the shed are located currently. So, I guess the owners would now have to indicate to the new owners that how they're attempting to meet 4.17. And it may be transferred to the new owners.
Yeah, something like that. At least everybody knows what's there and what has to...
Yeah, well, sure.
Hi, so we've just reworded condition number four, so it doesn't refer to them needing to obtain a building permit. So, now it reads, "The accessory building identified as movable shed shall meet section 4.1.7I or removed."
Or removed? Or moved, yeah. I, yeah, I wouldn't add anything in there. Just say meet that section.
Meet that section?
Yeah, because there are different ways it could happen. Now, the question, yeah, it could be...
Could be either by moving it or just by, you know, having the fire code rating confirmed.
Yeah, that's right. So, there was a question about should we put a date on that? And so, back to you.
Generally say three months, so we could put three months.
And that'll be a further clarification for your buyer. Any other discussion? Anything else you'd like to add? You're good?
Who's going to get the pizza oven then?
If you noticed the letters from the neighbors about how happy they were with where it was, the only complaint was it wasn't in their yard, so, yeah. There would be a major neighborhood arm wrestle to get it, I'm sure, but it would take more than arm wrestling to move it, so.
Are the new owners going to keep the pizza oven then?
As far as we know, we don't know.
Okay. All right, we'll arm wrestle it out later.
I can just read out condition four one more time.
Okay.
So, "The accessory building identified as movable shed shall meet section 417I and confirmation must be provided to the MD of Bicorne Planning Department within three months of this approval."
So, you're, I'm curious why you're taking away the requirement for the building code exemption letter.
It was my understanding that a building permit isn't required, so we didn't, we just removed the condition, but we can put it back in.
That's my understanding too, that a building permit wouldn't be required.
No, yeah, me too. I don't know about the structure over the oven, but that's your jurisdiction.
Well, and then, if we keep it, the wording of the condition this way, then it could be, like you said, an architect confirms it, a safety code officer, whatever.
If this was a larger accessory building, then we would require a building permit.
That's right.
So, we've just added that the confirmation be from a certified professional to that condition. So, confirmation will come from someone that's certified to make that, to make that decision.
Sure. Okay.
I'm going to attempt this. My apologies, Joy. I will make a motion that MPC approve Development Permit Application 2023 for two accessory buildings, the brick oven and movable shed, located at lot 13, block 2, plan 3032GH of number nine Fortress Mountain Way, as amended.
All in favor? Great, thanks. Well, good luck.
Okay, so we have one final development permit. Am I good to keep going?
Yeah, go ahead, thank you.
All right, so Development Permit Application 1523 for a Contractor Services use and construction of a second level within an existing industrial bay in Dead Man's Flats. The application was submitted by the owner and operator of Churey Construction, Frank Churey, with the Alberta Limited Company 1353721. The subject property is located at 102, number six, Limestone Valley Road in the Hamlet of Dead Man's Flats. Contractor Services is listed as a permitted use within the Hamlet Industrial District. The applicant provided a written description, which meets the definition provided in section 2.4 of the Land Use Bylaw for Contractor Services. Offices are listed as a discretionary use in the Hamlet Industrial District. So, the applicant has been referred, or the application's been referred to MPC for a decision. The application requirements for offices are located in section 19.3 of the Land Use Bylaw. And as per the definition of Contractor Services, the office shall be accessory to the principal use only and not for any other purposes unless a separate development permit is applied for. It was noted that there will be a small lunch area provided in the office space. The applicant has provided a list of appliances within the written description and these appliances are consistent with previous approvals. All parking requirements outlined in section 315 have been met. The floor plan shows 104 square meters, which will be dedicated to the Contractor Services use and 100 square meters for the new second level of the office space. A total of five parking stalls are required and are represented within the attached parking plan in the background materials and would become Schedule B for any approval. The bay has an existing barrier-free washroom, which is located on the lower level. The applicant was also asked to notify adjacent landowners, so unit 101, 103, 104 of number six, Limestone Valley Road, regarding the office space, which is discretionary as per section 4243. A notification email was provided and there's a map showing the units that were notified. And to clarify, two of the units are owned already by Churey Construction and then the other two are owned by the notification that we received. Additional information is attached within the background materials and then staff recommendation below.
Great, thanks, Katie. Questions? I couldn't find that list of appliances.
I believe it's... It wasn't much. It was like a coffee machine and a table.
Yeah, there's some plans right there.
Let me go up. Two seconds.
Were they going to put a sink up there?
No, so the upper floor to be used as an office by Shurei Construction, with the possibility to have a lunch area with tables, chairs, a microwave, and a coffee maker.
Cool. Any other discussion? If not, could we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve development permit application number fifteen twenty-three uh as per staff recommendations.
Very good. All in favor? Okay. That's passed. Okay, so, we've got uh three permits issued by the development officer. Any uh discussion? Uh just a question about that um slope variance at carriage rig, ridge. There was a, I see there was a, um in, in, in what was written, there was a um report from a geotechnical.
Yeah, yeah, so we received a geotechnical report, and then it was referred to third-party engineer for review. Uh there were no concerns noted by our engineer or the one um that prepared the report. And then it will also be um part, form, part of a development agreement on the land title, which will be registered before construction.
That's good, I know last time we talked about um you guys going ahead with those like that, and I just, I'm, I'm curious to, to know what they are. Does it comes up again? Any other discussion? If not, we'll accept those for information. We have no subdivision, no lease referrals, no new business, no camera. So next meeting is scheduled for May thirty-first, and Jen's not going to be here, and Andreas is not going to be here. You guys, as far as you know, will be here?
I think we might have to draw on our alternate.
That's us. If there's uh nothing else, a motion to adjourn? Kevin, motion to adjourn, all in favor? Pass, pass, thank you.